See any public commenters, Madam Clerk. So with that being said, we are going to adjourn into closed session with four council members present.
I'm not here recessing in closed session.
Recessing into closed session, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call the regular city council meeting to order after re-adjourning from closed session. We have no report from closed session tonight. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman, Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton, Mayor Mann, thank you.
And we have words of inspiration tonight from Pastor Steve Leonard from Eagle Ridge Church. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I pray, I'd just like to say, I purchased property out here in 1979, moved out here in 1985, and I just want to commend the mayor and the city. I'm amazed and very excited about what's going on in our city and all the progress. It's nice, I love it. And so with that, if you'd like to bow your heads, I'm going to pray. Father God, we thank you for tonight, for the meeting. God, I ask that your peace would manifest here. I personally thank you, God, for moving the way you are in our city and the progress we're making, Lord. It's a beautiful place to live and raise a family. For that, I thank you, God. I pray that you would bless this city called Menifee, the leadership that you've appointed, in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Steve. Councilmember Denver, would you lead us in flag slowly?
Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, one and all. Tonight, we had a presentation on the agenda for tonight, but the recipients were unable to attend, so unless there's any objection from the dais, we would like to go ahead and approve that proclamation for a future presentation outside the chamber. Is there any objection?
Fair enough.
Hearing none, that is ordered. Approval of the meeting minutes from July 30th and August 6th. Can we take those in one motion, Madam Clerk? Or you have a modification in our red folder for...
Yes, and I believe that Mr. Furman will want to recuse on July 30th, but not August 6th. And on the meeting minutes of August 6th, there was a minor wording change on one of the public speakers. It's been made, it's in your folder, and I'd ask you to approve them as amended.
Very well, then we will... Are there any objections to 6.1, noting that Councilmember Furman is abstaining? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. On to 6.2, minutes of August 6, 2014, as amended. Are there any other modifications? Hearing none, those meetings, those minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, do we have any modifications to the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you. On to public commenters. Please call the first public commenter.
Yes, Your Honor, Mike Mudd.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff, thank you for hearing me. I'd be really brief here. I'm just here to see if the city manager, Rob Johnson, can let us know where we're at right now with the research that the staff is doing on our media center or the city TV channel. If you could let us know at the appropriate time, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Next speaker.
Mary Brown. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I want to commend everyone for the fine job that they're doing. I don't... This is my first city council meeting, so usually I'm at a rotary meeting tonight. I've lived in Menifee for 25 years, and of course, I've seen a lot of changes happen. I live on Pleasant Valley Avenue, if you know that. The cross street is Holland. And recently, I mean, not recently, over the years, the traffic on Holland has increased significantly. There's no stops between Bradley and Hawn, so it's like a straightaway. It's very, very scary to turn onto Holland from my side street. It's, you're literally taking your life in your hands. I see drivers doing 60 and 70 miles an hour, and they're there before you know it, so you really can't turn very safely. I have to wait for long periods of time. Holland is monitored by the police, but normally, I only see a car there maybe every four to six months, and normally, they're not monitoring speed, they're filling out paperwork. So that's an area that really needs to be patrolled, especially in light of the fact that eventually, there's going to be an overpass over the freeway on Holland. It's just going to get really, really bad. At Bradley and Holland, it's very difficult when school lets out. The kids walk into the intersection, they very rarely ever look at where traffic is, usually they're texting, and it's very, very safe to perform a four-way stop at that intersection. I totally avoid the area when school's out or when school's in. There's lights being installed in other less-traveled areas, but I think that is a key location and very important for our kids. Another issue that I see frequently is the number of cars that run red lights. Often, my light, to go through the intersection, has turned green, and there's still cars turning on the red, and it's very, very scary, because sometime, somebody's going to get T-boned out in the middle of the intersection. And there's also a lot of, and these intersections are the ones that usually are in violation, Holland and Marietta Roads, Newport and Hawn, Newport and Bradley, and Newport and Antelope. Lots of traffic goes through after the light turns red. Another issue is the pedestrians crossing the crosswalk at Hawn and Newport. If you've ever sat there waiting to turn right, there's people entering the crosswalk, and they can't usually get across the crosswalk before the light turns, and the people that have to stop and wait to turn are still waiting. So I know my time is up, but...
It's your time.
I have the letters with all the information here. If you want me to leave them with Kathy, I will.
Yeah, we'll leave it with Kathy, Ms. Bennett, and she'll give it to the city engineer. But before you step away, one of the things that the council approved based upon staff's recommendation is a light. We approved, I think, two council meetings ago, a traffic light for Bradley and Holland Road, one of the three new ones.
Great.
So I understand your issue. I can visualize exactly what you're talking about, between Hawn, on Holland Road, between Hawn and Bradley, you're saying that there's the traffic, the speed's too high, or there's not enough...
Straightaway.
Traffic control.
Yeah.
So the city engineer will look at that for us, and maybe some of the other things that are on your list, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing those to our attention. Next speaker, please.
Gary Luthner.
My name is Gary Luthner. I live right over here in Palm Village. We like to get some of the curbs painted red in our neighborhood, and also on Antelope. They're beginning to fade pretty bad. And also, what are you going to do about all this traffic on Newport and Antelope? But we had, we were coming back from the doctor's office on Newport, and there was a semi waiting to get on to the freeway, and two cars blocked them. And I'll tell you what, I think that truck wanted to run over a couple of them, but couldn't do it. But it's getting pretty bad out there.
We, thank you very much, sir, for your comments. We have a plan for the Newport Road interchange. It's going to help that substantially. It's like, the Newport Road interchange project is kind of like making sausage. You know, it's not pretty when it's being made, but it really tastes good when it's done. So we're just going to have to bear with it a little bit, and we'll look at some of the other stuff with the, with the curbs, okay? We'll let the city engineer advise us on that.
Well, like I say, that truck wanted to run over those two cars.
Thank you, Gary, appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Carol Joyce.
Good evening, and thank you for your service, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm going to be very brief. The reason I'm really here is, there's a polluted pool, or algae pool, in my neighborhood, which I'm really concerned about it, because I do think it's a health hazard. And I called base, the city based upon the recommendation of our homeowners' association in February. I was worried about getting into the summertime, and at that point, there were a lot of mosquitoes around. I never heard back on anything about that, so I called about a week later, and to my knowledge at any rate, nothing has really been done with that. The pool is about now, about half evaporated, and it's all algae and muck. So I called again about two weeks ago, and another call after that, and I haven't heard anything. So I know it cannot be addressed here, but I would appreciate if somebody could get back to me and let me know what's going on with that.
Could you share the address again, please?
I don't know if that's too appropriate.
Well, what I'd like to do, Mr. Edgerton has his speaker on, or his button on, but when he's done, get with Ms. Gonzalez, and she'll take the information, and she'll look into it for you, and she'll make sure that you get the feedback.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I would just, I just had experience with an algae pool. It was my own, we had a beautiful pool, and then we allowed ducks to come in and have babies in our pool, and it was sweet and beautiful and wonderful, until our pool turned green. The only option is, you then have to drain the pool, then you have to do an acid wash on the sides to restore your pool, and the longer they let it go, the worse it's going to get. But you're right, that is a bacteria buildup. I would think the Health Department would have a concern with that.
It is, and I know I personally have CPD, so I've kind of keep my windows closed anymore, but, you know, I'm concerned for a lot of reasons.
Thank you, Ms. Joyce.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Gary Barton.
My name's Gary Barton, and I'm a resident of the Sun City community of Menifee, and I'm here to, I am also the chairman of the Emergency Preparedness Committee of the Sun City Civic Association. I'm here tonight to officially advise you of the existence of our committee. Our committee is working to aid the residents of Sun City with the information, tools, and resources they need to prepare themselves and their property in the event of a catastrophic event such as a earthquake, flood, communications breakdown, even terrorist attacks. We are creating an emergency communications center and triage center for our community as the Red Cross has designated our campus buildings as prospective incident command center. We are working with Joe Gonzalez of your staff, as well as Cal Fire, Red Cross, Menifee Valley, Amateur Radio Club, and other organizations. We already have a modest number of items necessary for our incident command center, and some of you attended our recent ribbon-cutting ceremony of our, for our emergency preparedness shed. We are making plans to have an emergency preparedness expo on October 25th, 2014, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and we would like to be, have that event placed on the city calendar, and will, of course, invite you and the community as a whole to attend. I appreciate your time and listening to our announcement.
Thank you. Just a quick question about your shelter. I know it's a Red Cross shelter, it's been one for quite some time. Do you still have, in your storage facility back there, do you still have 100 cots?
No, we don't have 100 cots. We have some cots, but we...
How many cots do you have?
Probably in the neighborhood of maybe two dozen.
Okay. Ew, there used to be more than that.
I'm not aware...
Before your watch.
Yeah. I don't know what happened to that many, but that's about all we really have. But of course, the, what we're trying to do is really get the information to the citizens and residents, especially of Sun City, to be prepared on their own, because if there is a catastrophic emergency, aid isn't going to come immediately. So we want the information, and like I say, the tools and resources for them to take care of themselves.
Thank you.
Do you have an address?
You can use my home address.
Oh, is that where, is that where the preparedness stuff is?
Well, no, that's not where the preparedness stuff is located, on the Sun City campus, right near the maintenance department.
Okay.
And it's, it's in a shed that we acquired with a grant from Marion Ashley, and I know Greg August knows where it's at.
I do.
And Scott Mann knows where it's at, so, you ask one of those guys.
Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, I want to compliment you on any attempts to create better understanding in case emergencies. Of course, an earthquake, a major one, will come. We don't know when, but it will come. But the way the general law cities, and Scott, you might want to clarify this, the way general law cities have been set up, as you know, for a city, the one who takes the lead on an emergency is the mayor. Mayor primarily, though, is out to try to disseminate information to the public, depending if communication is available, and it's the city manager, then that takes charge of the forces. But the fire and the police have power unto themselves, depending upon the height of the emergency, and of course, there's the mutual aid, and state law comes into being. So just, I think it should be clear to everybody, what you're doing is extremely helpful, but there is an umbrella that automatically moves in and takes effect if and when we do have an emergency.
Well, we actually took our CERT, some of our CERT training, actually, right here in this room, a little over a year ago. And when we went back to the Sun City Council and talked about it, and they, we found out that there had been an emergency preparedness group there at Sun City, but it fell apart or fell off away, I guess, a few years ago. And that's when I kind of found out about it, and the Sun City Council approved us to attempt to start this EPAC Committee, Emergency Preparedness Advisory Committee.
Excellent. Thanks, Mr. Barton.
All right, you're welcome.
Mr. Johnson, can we partner and make sure that that event gets on our calendar?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Les Nursey.
First of all, I'd like to thank city clerk Bennett for correcting the minutes of last month's meeting, last, the last council meeting, to show that I in fact said that I was proud of what this current council had done, up until that meeting, that is. I just wanted to clarify why I said I was appalled at the way that meeting was being run. Particularly, I want to talk about the way the presiding officer, namely the mayor, interrupted everybody, called points of order, and accused fellow council members of inappropriate behavior. He talked of inappropriate behavior, and then proceeded to read out private correspondence, not addressed to him, sent from a private, personal email account, and if that's not enough, he then read out the names of every recipient, private citizens like me. Sounds more like the NSA than the city council. Then having done that, he had the gall to accuse the deputy mayor of irresponsible behavior, crippling the city, attempting to recollection ear, and finally accuse him of violating the city's decorum policy. No, Mr. Mayor, that's what you did. It's irresponsible, and to use your own bad loser wording from last meeting's vote, it is absolutely, unequivocally, resoundingly unethical to read out details of someone's private correspondence in a public, open-to-the-press meeting. And I for one object most strongly, sir. Indeed, your use of just about every conceivable procedure or maneuver to stop the matter coming to emotion made one wonder, why were you so desperate to stop it? One wonders what it was you were so afraid of. Is it just the fear of losing all those developer contributions, or is it something else? Have you made promises? Do you have something to hide? You accused deputy mayor of unethical behavior behind the scenes with developers, allegations which subsequently turned out to be untrue. But if you want to talk about ethics relating to developers, sir, why haven't you signed, signed the council's pledge? Why hasn't Councilor Denver signed the pledge? I repeat, gentlemen, do you have something to hide? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nursey. Next speaker.
Ron Page.
Sorry, we didn't hear the name because of the clapping.
Ron Page.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for your community service. I'm here as a representative of the residents of Augusta Drive. I've been here a few times before concerning this problem we have of cut-through traffic. And it's, it's actually grown, it's really bad. It's unbearable almost sometimes in the day. It's at night, it's on the weekends, it's on holidays, it's on, it doesn't matter what day it is. And people use it in place of Cherry Hills Boulevard, so, you know, it's, it's easy to see why they do it. And I've been in touch with the Public Works Department on this. Mr. Smith asked me to make a couple of reservations down at the Sun City Civic Association so that we could have a town hall meeting with these residents. So I made those reservations, and I've emailed those to the Public Works Department two separate times and dates. And that was on the 11th of this month, and I haven't heard back yet, so as soon as you let me know, I will make those reservations, or actually, I'll make the tentative appointments, and then we will, we'll be able to meet, and you can meet everybody on the street, and it won't be just me, you know? You can hear everybody, what the complaints they have, and, but I appreciate your work, and I appreciate that you're, you know, you're going to be looking into this, and we're going to do something about this eventually, because it's, like I say, it's unbearable sometimes, and we were, we're just asking the city to implement some, some traffic calming measures, some type of measurement to, to distract the traffic to go down another street, or, you know, at least go slower, because they really, sometimes 70 miles an hour, because it's just a cut-through, and when you're cutting through, you want to go faster, so you can cut through. And so if there's any way that we can support the Public Works Department or the city in any way, we'll be, we'll be more than happy to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Next speaker.
Michael Bellomo.
My name is Michael Bellomo, and I'm from the office of Assemblywoman Melissa Melendez. I'm here tonight to invite everyone to join the Assemblywoman for a free Senior Scam Stopper seminar. The seminar will be held on Thursday, September 4th, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the K San Esro's Senior Center, right here in Menifee. Seniors are the most targeted group for Medicare fraud, insurance fraud, and identity theft. This seminar will show seniors how they can protect themselves from all these types of fraud and more. Speakers for the seminar will include the California State License Board, the California Department of Insurance, the Senior Medicare Patrol, and the Riverside County Care. Coffee and refreshments will be provided, and I would encourage all constituents to attend, not just seniors, as anyone can share this important information with their loved ones. Once again, the seminar will be held on Thursday, September 4th, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the K San Esro Center, right here in Menifee, and flyers for this event can be found in the room just outside this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Katie Manier.
At the Planning Commission meeting, I don't want to interrupt anybody if you have something important to talk about.
Please proceed.
At a Planning Commission meeting last week, a representative from the water agency, from a water agency, was here to state there's plenty of water, but we need to manage what's being run off, run down the streets and, and misused, and the toilet here that was even just continuously running, running, and people need to watch what they're doing. Now we have representatives from EMWD stating there is plenty of water. In Menifee 24/7, there's an article that states there is a 3A drought alert, and citizens can be fined for using water for things such as watering off a driveway, or washing their own car, and letting water run down the drain. There needs to be a full investigation of how they can make these statements when it comes time to approve development, and they keep, continue to increase development, and yet the citizens cannot use the water they pay for in their own homes. They seem to be telling one story to the council and another to the public. The citizens need in writing a full disclosure of the water conditions for the next 36 months based on the supply we currently have, not what we hope to have, not what we're praying for rain for, or snowpack in the mountains. Anything less than that is withholding the truth from the public, and we know that this group is good at doing that. On another note, it seems some of the people running for office want to talk about economic growth. Just in case you people don't know, economic growth cannot happen when two giant stores, like the two Walmarts we have going in within a few miles apart, will run small business right out of town and put more people out of work. That's what Walmart does, and what have they, what they have done repeatedly in cities across America, and yet this city cannot wait to have two of them. There will be no jobs brought in, or very few jobs, I shouldn't say no jobs, very few jobs. They bring employees from their other stores. They'll probably hire maybe 150, 200 people. That is a pea in a bucket, when we have 85,000 people in this city, and how many are out of work? What is our unemployment rate? Does anybody keep track of that?
9.2.
In this city, it's 9.2. Well, that's an embarrassment, and we should have some businesses that are...
It's consistent with the county.
Bringing people. We have people driving as far away as Poway and farther to work, and yet we don't have jobs in this city. I want to know why we're paying Jeff Wyman, or giving him $1.2 million in a fund for work he's doing to bring business into the city. That's not how businesses are brought into a city. Businesses scope out where they want to go. They know by growth where they're going. There are realtors that develop economic, or business realtors, commercial realtors that investigate this. They know what cities are doing, they know what's up and coming, and that's how we get business, and yet we are providing taxpayers money to Mr. Wyman. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Rogelio Saldana.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm here tonight to educate myself a little better about our city. This is my second time in attendance. I also want to bring to attention a rather serious traffic situation that's occurring daily at the non-stop intersection of Menifee Road and New Arrowhead. The west side of this intersection is the entrance and exit to a roughly 50-home community where I reside called St. Andrews. The traffic problem lies in the exit to our neighborhood. The eastbound exit to our neighborhood is located south of a blind curve that prevents a driver from verifying whether, or truly verifying whether there is oncoming traffic from North Menifee Road. The resultant situation is a frequent near collision from behind as we exit the neighborhood. Without much exaggeration, I would venture to say that 50% of the time one exits from the neighborhood, one encounters this hazard. Cars often are speeding between 55 to 65 miles per hour regarding, regardless of the 45 mile-per-hour sign posted. Furthermore, this happens at all hours of the day and evening, and worse still, it occurs with alarming frequency at the hours in which children are either walking to school or being dropped off at the very nearby Freedom Crest Elementary School. I would like to request that the city of Menifee seriously consider installing a signal light, or at the very least, a stop sign, to avoid the catastrophes we often witness in our quickly-expanding town. Please initiate, I'm asking the council members and the mayor and everybody involved here to please initiate the protocol for considering this proposal so we can avoid tragedies. That's one thing that I wanted to speak about. I think I got a little bit more time, right? Okay. Also, I wanted to know, and I'm not sure who my corresponding councilman is, I live at the corner of New Arrowhead and Menifee Road, I wanted to know what is currently being built adjacent to the fire station that's at the northeast corner of Menifee Road and Newport Road? If somebody can give me any orientation about that?
Northeast corner is an AM PM, southeast corner is the Stater Brothers anchor, and then on the southwest corner, nothing's been announced yet, but those things are coming. At least they're going to be presented to the commission and the council at some point.
Okay, I'm speaking of the property that lies at the very corner, the very northeast corner?
Yep, next to the Station 76.
Yeah, it says Auto Care Center, but it wasn't specific as to what that Auto Care Center is going to be. I kind of shudder to think if it's going to be a mechanic-type shop, like the one on Bradley, next to the Menifee Athletic Club. I'm concerned that would bring the values down of the homes in that area. Do you know what type of Auto Care Center that's going to be at the very corner?
Hadn't heard.
I see a lot of them.
No, it's an AM PM mini-mart, it's not an Auto Care Center.
An AM PM mini-mart?
Yeah.
Is that final? Is that going to be built, or how long ago was that decided?
That was approved six or so months ago, Jonathan, that timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Also, I left my email address so that my corresponding council person can get back to me about the possible signal light being installed?
Thank you, sir. We'll have, that's, your council member's Deputy Mayor Edgerton in District 3, and we'll have the city engineer evaluate that for a future analysis. Mr. Johnson, if that's possible.
Just to give you an update, right by Freedom Crest, Alder Gate and Menifee Road, there's a traffic signal going in there at the same time as the other one at Holland and Bradley, and Antelope and Garbani.
Well, that'd be great.
So you have a signal coming, and with that, knowing that, then the city engineer can take a look at the other intersection you're talking about.
The speeds are rather high, and like I said, our exit is at a blind corner as it comes over the bridge from the golf course. So there's really no way of truly verifying oncoming traffic. They need to put something there.
Deputy Mayor?
Tragic.
Yes, I am the council person for that area, and I also live right off Menifee, so I share some of your same concerns. But any of us who are on the council, our emails are public, and you can have my card, you can get it from the city clerk.
That's perfectly fine. I'll go ahead and write something that I'd be proud to, I read aloud.
Well, and if you would email me, then I will get back to you. What I do is when people email about concerns, I also consult with staff so that we get a comprehensive response.
Okay. And just lastly, I just wanted to tell Councilmember August and Councilmember Deputy Mayor Edgerton that I wholeheartedly concur with the vision that you guys have for this city. I think development's great, but it needs to be paced out according to the citizens' desires, not to the revenue that can be produced for businesses that are coming into the area.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Gene Wonderlick.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, good afternoon, members of the council and staff. Just like to wish the City of Menifee a great deal of good luck over the next few days, a few weeks. Earlier today, you received a letter that I had sent out on behalf of the Southwest California Legislative Council. The Ledge Council is a coalition of the Menifee Valley, Temecula, Murieta, Wildomar, and Lake Elsinore Chambers of Commerce. This was sent to the Governor, Jerry Brown, encouraging him, urging him to please affix his signature to SB 69 and AB 1152. Both of those bills passed out of their respective houses earlier today with unanimous bipartisan support, and were passed on to the governor. Those bills, as you know, have been, we've been trying to pass in one form or another for the past three years, since your VLF funds were misappropriated a few years back. I know that means a great deal to the budget of the city, and certainly the Southwest California Legislative Council is supportive of that position. Another letter went out from the Southwest Riverside County Association, representing about 4,000 realtors here in the area, and again, very supportive letter of that because we believe that money rightly belongs to the city. I would also encourage all the citizens of Menifee to similarly contact the governor's office and provide their encouragement to him to please affix his signature, sign off on this bill, and get the money back to you folks that rightly belongs in your pocket. So if the citizens of Menifee would like to do that, we'll be happy to provide, you know, sample letters or whatever, or they can certainly call the governor's office and just voice their support for the two bills, and again, I wish you good luck on getting those measures through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wonderlick. Now I don't have to do that update on my council member updates. Next speaker, please.
Roxanne Thompson.
Yeah. I hope he doesn't either.
I'd like to thank Mayor and council for hearing me out. I just wanted to say that when government stifles their citizens from their basic rights, be it voting, be it opinions, and be it choices, freedom to express those opinions, voices, voting, be it what it may, we diminish the basic principles of what our government's all about. And with that said, I'd like to thank Greg August for listening to the people and not stifling us. I'd like to thank Mayor Mann for first having me meet with him on the ordinance. I'd like to thank Mr. Leclerc for tolerating me and Greg, and Mr. Machado for being a part of allowing, for helping the rural community with the container ordinance. And I just wanted to know, I wanted you all to know how greatly appreciative the rural community was, for you guys not only listening to us, but accepting what we wanted, and I just wanted to thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mike. Okay. Those are the end of speakers for the public comments, sir.
All right, very good, thank you. On to council member updates and comments. Gentlemen, do you have any updates for us tonight?
Yes, Scott.
Mr. August?
Before the, before the House leaves tonight, in case we're here for a few more hours, I wanted to let them know that at the end of the meeting, I'm going to be requesting that staff put together a workshop, or request a workshop in the future with Western Municipal Water District and Eastern Municipal Water District, so they can come in and give us an update on the water situation, and we can, again, ask them questions. So I'll be doing that at the end of the meeting in case any of you are not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Furman?
Well, I'm going to agree with Greg, especially since I've had a lot of time to read in the last five weeks, because that's about all I can do, and the problems in the state, in other cities, in San Diego, and everywhere, are anticipating that we have a drought and a water problem. EMWD, when questioned, is all they said, that they supply water when they're asked, but they don't answer the questions that we need to know as a council to work on future developments. So I am going to let Greg make the comments at the end of the meeting, and maybe we'll have, we'll have them come here.
Thank you.
We'll give you credit for that second at the end, how's that?
Okay.
Okay. I have just a note for, some of us up here know a lady by the name of Audrey Bernithy, who has done a lot of things for a lot of folks up here in the Sun City area, and she's really, really ill. And, you know, she recent, she lost her husband last year, or earlier this year, and she's suffering from the same condition, and I would just ask that our hearts and thoughts and prayers go out to her as she's battling this illness.
Is she battling at home, in a hospital?
She's at home. With respect to what Mr. Wonderlick already covered at the podium, I, you know, it's really gratifying, I mean, we've been down this road before with the governor, we had a bill that presented to him at his desk, which he vetoed. At that time, there were several entities in Sacramento that were opposed to it because of some language and for some confusion as to effects in other parts of the statewide budget, and all of those impediments have been removed. CSAC, some labor unions, the Teachers Association, et cetera, et cetera. It seems like all of those folks have now rallied around these two bills. SB 69 authored by Senator Roth, who graciously allowed Assemblymember Eric Linder and Assemblywoman Melissa Melendez to sign on this week as co-authors, and as Gene already mentioned, SB 69 sailed through the Assembly 75-0, and AB 1521, which is its counterpart from the Assembly, sailed through the Senate at 35-0, and they are on their way to the governor's desk, and we'll be signing out a letter tonight in support as well as all the other cities. And we encourage you to do, send a letter or make a phone call, and get the governor to sign those bills and restore our money. Hearing no other updates, that concludes my report. On to the consent calendar. May I have a motion on the consent calendar? Mr. Furman?
I basically had a question on procedure. There's, there's some second readings there that I didn't participate in a vote. Do I abstain? Do I vote, or what?
There's no reason that you can't vote on the second reading.
Okay.
Even if you didn't vote on the first one, either way, you're still entitled.
All right. Well, the only one I want to do, make a correction on, is 10.4.
So you're pulling 10.4 for separate discussion?
I wasn't, wasn't here, and I had abstained from that discussion anyhow, so I am, I am not going to vote on that because I abstained.
Knowledge, so Madam Clerk, so you, we can, he can record a vote noting the abstention on 10.4?
That's correct.
May I have a motion on the consent calendar? May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
On to Agenda Item 11.1, public hearing for cost study analysis and adoption of Resolution Number 14-391, establishing a fee schedule for recreation programs, services, and park facilities use in the city. Mr. Johnson, is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Robert Lennox, our Community Services Director, has the balance of the item for you.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to present this item as a public hearing. It's a cost study analysis and proposed fee schedule for recreation programs, facilities, and activities within city-owned property. Sorry, the clicker is not working.
Is it on?
There we go. Okay. Just a little bit of background, the city had adopted the county fees during incorporation, which were not terribly detailed in nature. Some of the facilities, like K San Esro Center, had a fee structure that the county had been using for many years, as you know. K San Esro Center in particular was not a city facility until recently, but Lazy Creek Recreation Center, as well as the park facilities west of the I-215, were and are city property, and the facility use arrangement for those athletic fields and picnic shelters did not follow any particular fee structure and were open to use by the public as a first-come, first-served basis. Those fees I mentioned include facility rentals, programs, and athletic fields. The recent changes, we did obviously terminate or did not renew our contract with Riverside County EDA for the operatorship of the city-owned facilities. We accepted the K San Esro Center from the county, and then we also completed the Oddie Murphy Ranch Sports Park, which is a pretty substantial facility that has athletic facilities, or athletic fields, as well as picnic shelters, which are a very sought-after amenity for not only the residents of AMR, but also surrounding communities who want to picnic or have birthday parties in the park. As a result, staff did contract with Revenue and Cost Specialists LLC to conduct a cost study analysis and determine what fees, and what fees, and if any changes at all to existing fees from the county should be made to better position the city to reserve out and facilitate the use of city facilities. So with that, I want to invite up Eric Johnson from Revenue and Cost Specialists to give a report on the process and outcomes of the study that his firm completed.
Great, thank you, Robert.
Welcome back, welcome back, Mr. Johnson.
Good to be back here again. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Eric Johnson from Revenue and Cost Specialists, and as Robert said, we had just done a cost study for the recreation program. It's similar to the process and the study we had done for the rest of the city when we did the fee study, the cost of services fee study, and so the first thing we wanted to do is what are the costs? What are the, what's the staff involvement? What's the contract cost involvement? And so we broke it out by program. We identified, if we can click over to the next slide, please. There we go. We identified the direct program expenses for the various different programs, and so this would include things like supplies, as well as valley-wide contract cost. We also identified the indirect costs, and so this would be department and division overheads within the department and within programs also that are providing administrative support, as well as the citywide costs, the share of finance and city manager and city council, that they got their fair share of those costs also. We also identified the maintenance cost, and so we looked at what does it cost to maintain the facilities involved? What is it cost to maintain the fields involved? So in most cases, that was utilities, supply costs, as well as valley-wide contract costs in regards to the fields. For the facilities, we also put in an depreciation number. What's, it's, what's the insured value of those facilities over its useful life? In this case, we used a 50-year life, to come up with an annual depreciation number for the senior center, the Lazy Creek Center. We then, we then came up with cost detail by program, and if you look in your report, in the text of the report, there's the table which identifies for the senior center program. What are the direct costs? What are the indirect costs? What are the facility costs? Same thing for the preschool, after-school program, same thing for the contract classes program. And you'll notice that senior center, of course, doesn't have fees, we're not recommending any fees. The preschool, after-school program is recovering about 86% of its costs, if it's direct costs, excuse me. When you look at the indirect costs, as well as facility costs, it's only recovering about 26%. We're not recommending any fees for that program, or any updates to the fees for that program, just more a point of information that this is what this program is recovering as far as its cost. For the contract classes, the same type of thing, recovering about 57% of its direct cost, but when we look at indirect and facility costs, it goes down to 22%. And that was a little different, and that's, it's more of a contract negotiation between the city and the contract instructors, as far as who keeps how much of the class fee. Then for the senior center rental and the athletic field rentals, we identified the costs and the revenues, and for the, for the facility rentals, the revenues are in excess of the cost, and that's not unusual, because the cost for their fair share of the senior center, for the rentals of the senior center, is relatively small. Their hour per square foot cost is relatively small. For the fields, the current revenues are recovering about 19% of the cost to maintain the fields. Any questions about the cost detail before I just move to the next? Mr. Denver?
I just don't understand why we would put into their, the appreciation or the depreciation of the buildings. In other words, we, the citizens purchased the buildings, we, although we didn't, the city didn't build them, the county did, and then when, in 50 years, 15 years, whatever year, 50 years, we would rebuild them and using citizens' money. I'm not sure where we have any, the logic, your only logic, I would think, would be is we'd put away a little of that money each month so that we would have enough money and you'd give us reports, someone would give us reports on how much money we've accumulated to replace the building. That isn't done, and I just don't know why we would include that fund in there.
The logic is, as you stated, for a future replacement of that facility, and with the idea that if there isn't a replacement cost, and money isn't actually set aside, like you mentioned, which, you're right, isn't happening, and doesn't happen in most places, but it's a cost that occurs. That building is depreciating, will eventually need to be replaced, and so at that point, there is either replacement funds that have been set aside, or there's, you know, general fund balance, or there's debt service, or a combination of the three. And so what we're, all we're doing is recognizing that this is a cost. Thank you. If we go to the next slide, I'm sorry, we are there. And so the next step, of course, was to say, here's your cost, here's what you're currently recovering, where do we want to make changes to the fees? And the first thing we looked at is, how do we want to differentiate the different types of renters for facilities or fields? And again, most public agencies do this. And again, most public agencies do this, break it out between youth groups, resident youth groups. We also broke out resident nonprofit civic and social groups. We broke out private party residents, just a citizen wanting to rent a facility or a field, as well as other resident nonprofits. We broke out in-town businesses and non-resident nonprofit groups. And we also broke out non-residents and other non-resident groups. The idea is that there's, those groups contribute different amounts to the city. Non-residents, of course, don't contribute tax dollars unless to the extent they spend money here in town. Residents pay their tax dollars, and the idea is that they would pay less than a non-resident for that reason. So we identified these various different groups. You'll notice in the fee schedule that groups two, three, and four, for the most part, have the same fees. So even though we've differentiated the groups, they really could be combined together as one resident slash nonprofit group. We then did a fee survey for surrounding public agencies, as well as private facility rentals, to get an idea of what are your competitors charging? Because this is different than a building permit or a conditionally-used plan. This is something that the person using the service has a choice to go use that service someplace else. So you have to live in the marketplace. So even though we identified the cost for rentals and the cost for field rentals, the fees have to fit within what people are willing to pay and what they can get by going someplace else. And so by looking at that survey, we came up with some fee recommendations for the various different groups, for the various different rooms, and the various different facilities. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to Robert, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Eric. Yes, Eric mentioned, what's on the screen now is the same thing that's within the report, within the staff report, and proposed as the fee schedule attached to the resolution for consideration this evening. This is the proposed fee schedule for the various amenities and assets that are managed through Community Services Department. These are on par, if not lower than a lot of the surrounding community and agencies around in the region. Some notable things, the ball field or athletic field rental fee for Group Two, Three, and Four are slightly less than what Valleywide currently charges to user groups. In addition, the Case Saniseros room rentals are slightly lower than what has traditionally been charged there. And the intent there is to encourage more rental use of the facility and to be more, I guess, on par with what should be charged for the type of amenity that's available there. When looking at surrounding facilities of the same size, there are, those facilities tend to offer more amenity within them, and that typically justifies the higher rate. Whereas Case Sanisero Center is a little bit dated, and perhaps with a future update to the facility, we may be able to reexamine those fees. But for now, this is what we thought was a reasonable fee amount. So with that, it concludes the report and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Johnson?
First of all, I just wanted to commend Robert and Eric for the study. But I did want to clarify, this did go through the commission?
Yes, it did. At their last meeting, they did approve or recommend for approval of council without any changes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you for the excellent report. Does this in any way need to be compatible with Valleywide at any level? And have we had discussions with them about this?
Yeah, during the report and analysis process, many of the requests for the fee schedules had gone to Valleywide to get their current fee schedule, what their costs are to run their programs, and to do reservations at their own facilities so that there was an apples-to-apples comparison there. And in addition, it went before the commission, at which Valleywide is present at, and there weren't any, I guess, comments or notes from them about the proposed fee schedule. So our assumption is that they are in concurrence with what's being proposed.
Thank you. What I noticed about the outcome of the fee study is that when you said it's lower than the sum of the surrounding agencies, I'm glad you mentioned Valleywide, that's positive. But I noticed that it's also lower than the school district, because the school district charges a, they charge a replacement cost for every hour, whatever their custodial rate is, that's what they charge, plus a kicker. So this is better than competitive. It beats those agencies, and that's very positive, in my opinion. So are there any other questions from council to the staff? Yes, Mr. August?
I wanted to just reiterate, I'm going to, basically, the mayor stole my words there. I want to thank Mr. Lennox. I did check with the Parks and Trails and Recreation Commission, and they were very, very pleased with your report. You kept it really within the industry standards throughout the area, kept it very competitive, not any new expenditures for the city, and we always like to hear that. So thank you for that, and thanks to the Parks and Trails Commission, you, Mr. Johnson, and the staff as well.
Thank you, Mr. August. Are there any other questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at time 7:57. Madam Clerk, have we received any correspondence regarding this item?
No, sir.
And was it properly, publicly noticed?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any public testimony on this item?
No, sir.
Very well. We'll close the public hearing at time 7:58. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Shall we move?
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Denver.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Hi.
Councilmember Furman.
Hi.
Councilmember August.
Hi.
And Mayor Mann.
Hi.
Thank you.
Onto Agenda Item 12.1, discussion and consideration of adoption of Urgency Ordinance Number 2014-157U, imposing a 45-day moratorium on processing of applications of apartment structures. Mr. Johnson, do you have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. I thought what I'd start by doing is what I asked if you wanted to see again at the last council meeting, I brought that back. This is the general plan proposed land use plan that's actually dated February 7, 2012. That kind of set the tone for the land use plan. I thought we'd start here and then as we go from the city limits and what was available at, when there was nothing here, to the available land that's left, I think that that will kind of frame the discussion on 12-1, I believe, on 12-2. And when I offered to do this at the last council meeting, you asked me to bring it back. I thought it was pertinent, we'd do it upfront, so that we know what the available land, unentitled land is left in the city. So the city benefit fees comprised of 29,813 acres. And that, if you look at the top, it'll tell you the total acres. If you look at the bottom of the screen, it'll tell you what's available for consideration. So as we go through the slides, you'll see a distinct change in those numbers. So 6,761 acres of specific plans, leaving the 23,052 acres below. There's 2,527 acres of open space. There are 4,303 public facilities in acres. As you can see, we're dropping down. We're now built entitled residential land is 9,972 acres. And that means the acres available for consideration of unentitled land would be down to 6,250. This is built entitled non-residential land. It's another 1,491 acres. This brings the available land for consideration or non-entitled down to 4,759 acres. This is a reverse of what you just saw on the previous map. This is the total vacant land not already entitled. And again, this was before we did the final general plan land use map. It was about 16% total of the city, 4,759 acres. You can see the difference between the residential and non-residential. Residential was 3389, and the non-residential was 1370. I tried to get cute on the next slide and show, oh, I didn't get cute on this one, it's the following one. This was the 11%. So of all of the land uses that were available to be changed through the new general plan from the RCIP, there was 11% of the total property in the city basically changed from what it was to what it is now. And this looks, as you can tell, slightly like an EDC zone. So what I did on this one is I've shown the total changes from the land, from the RCIP, which is 3,371 acres, or 11% of the city. And you can see that the economic development corridors in the light purple are 2,276 acres. That's unentitled developable land. It's not built on. There's some miscellaneous residential of 1,033 acres, and some miscellaneous non-residential of 62 acres. These are all, keeping in mind, with exception to the minor parcels adjusted at the general plan adoption, I did not have the opportunity to go and make those filters for this to lay over the top. So this is vacant land not entitled and EDC property. So you can see that 4,759 acres are not entitled in the city. There's a residential and a non-residential component you see there, but the economic development corridor makes up 2,276 acres of that 4,759. And as we talked before at the last council meeting, we wanted to make sure that you could see visually that that EDC corridor, the purple areas, we used to call them the purple blob on the draft land use map, is eligible for 15% of residential development in those. And of that 15% of the EDC of that residential component, that's typically where your high-density and very high-density residential pieces would go. Because as we know, typically you wouldn't put large lot next to a commercial center. It's typically the other way around. You want folks who are going to be active at that center. So from that came your approved land use map. And again, this has, this is minus the minor changes from the December 18th. There were about five parcels that you changed in different locations. But if I flip back here, you're talking about anywhere between 11% of the city and 16% of the city as unentitled property in either a residential, non-residential, or economic development corridor land use area. So I thought we would start with that. And then I believe the item, if there are no questions based on the information that we just provided here...
Can I ask a question? Just a question. Could you please put up the slide, Rob, the residential not entitled? Keep it there for a second.
You want residential not entitled, right?
The last one.
Yeah.
Here's total vacant, here's total vacant land not already entitled. And if you look at the yellow portion of it, that's going to be the residential piece. So the red piece would be more the commercial piece.
Those are the...
So yellow is residential, not entitled.
That can be EDC as well, so I don't want the EDC.
So portions of, I hear what you're saying. I don't have that map.
Okay, okay.
But I think we can work on this map, because portions of the red zone, 15% of the total area of the red zone, is available for residential. So you have all the yellow spots that you see are the residential, and the majority of the red would be commercial retail.
I'm not sure this is an appropriate question, but for the, I don't know, for that, we mentioned 15,000 square foot lots at the last meeting.
Correct.
Do they reflect, I know we're not going to probably put those in the EDC, but are the lots reflected in here where, and I'm not saying we would, that they would be, those lots would be able to turn into 15,000 square feet?
Well, most of what you see in the outline rural areas, especially in the southwest quadrant of the city, are one-acre minimums or greater. On the southeast portion of the city, I believe that's the same. If you go into the Bell Mountain area, which is in here.
Yes.
Those are two and a half, I believe, minimums.
Okay.
If you go out to the Quell Valley areas, which of course is under a prohibitive build right now because of the septic issue, there are areas out there that could be one and two-acre pieces, but I believe it's a different land use. And the top here is probably medium density in the Roma Land area.
But these yellow ones are unentitled?
Unentitled residential property.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Furman?
Thanks, Rob. I think this comes pretty close to the statement I made last council meeting. There was 3,400 acres, so you're pretty, a pretty good guess. I was only 11 acres off. A lot of that ground, looks like almost half of it is in my district. And, you know, I'm very concerned that that kind of be protected and remain large lots. And I'm really impressed, I think you gave me some figures, there was 505 one-acre lots and like 2,200 lots that were bigger. I think you gave me those numbers at one time. And I'm kind of amazed at how miniscule it really is as far as what we have to protect. So that's the only comment I have right now.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Were you finished with your staff report, sir? Or do you have additional information?
That's pretty much the information that we wanted to bring forward, because we knew that there was going through the discussion and consideration of the apartment structure uses. And then on the minimum lot size, you had wanted me to bring back kind of what was remaining in the city so that you could make a discussion and consideration for where you wanted to go next.
Mr. Edgerton?
I want to give information with this speed of time.
Let me, let's take a couple more questions. I just want to ask...
From the council?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mr. Furman?
The apartment availability, would it only be in the red area, Johnson?
Typically, I'll flip to this next page here. What we did in the EDC area is we created the residential, commercial, and the 15% opportunity for residential, but it was very high-density and high-density. And simply because the council had made a decision based on land use changes, based on the land use map originally that was going through the general plan and the G-PAC, to protect the rural edges, to make sure that those areas that were one-acre and rural stayed that way. That's why most of the purple areas are on our highly-traveled arterials right next to the freeway. And if there was going to be high-density or very high-density residential projects, they would be located near the freeway. Now, just because we have 15% available in the EDC area, and Charles Leclerc may have to help me, or Lisa, I don't believe we have to accept the project in that area. The 15% is available, but it is not mandatory to build that 15% residential in the EDC. Is that correct?
You are correct. The 15% is the maximum allowed in the EDC.
Throughout the whole city.
Throughout the whole EDC.
So if we allowed a project along the Ethan Act Corridor EDC, and we said, we approved a mixed-use development project, and it had 15% there, then theoretically, we couldn't necessarily allow any additional residential units in some of the other EDC.
Well, you've got...
It kind of depends upon how you mix and match it.
You'd have to do it...
You've got five subareas in your EDC. They all have separate limitations. But yes, the overall would be 15, and it is up to the council. If the council chose to put it all in one subarea, you could do that, then you would have to amend your general plan in order to allow additional units in either that subarea or other subareas.
So the council really requested and looked at how to protect itself on the land use map. And I think it came through that way. So I believe I answered your question. Just want to make sure I did.
I have one other question. Is that okay? All right. Regarding what the mayor said, let's take an example. If you look at the property up there on Valley Boulevard, just designated high-density, it's not EDC, but it's going to be high-density that we used for our housing element. Well, disregard that. If, let's go down south towards Scott Road. If we filled all that up with 15, with totally high-density housing, that means the purple across the street or on the west side would not have to be that, and it could be all commercial.
It would not be allowed to be unless you, the council, agreed to do a general plan amendment. There's a limitation of 15% maximum on...
My final question, if somebody was, just had to have high-density residential on the other side of the freeway, but we allowed the developer and the builder to put all residential on the east side... the builder to put all residential on the east side, would, would the, the builder or the developer have a claim that he has to have those apartments are high density on that side?
No. If it meets the 15% threshold, this council can deny that project and not have any ill effects to it.
Okay, thank you.
However, you could also approve a general plan amendment to, to have them build it. But that's at your discretion.
Could you go back to the red map and yellow map for me? This next question is not in any way an indictment on staff whatsoever. It's more, it's more about us up here and asking for the right stuff. Because to me, had we had, had we had asked for something like this before the deputy mayor had agendized a discussion of minimum lot sizes, perhaps the discussion would have been substantially different. Because to me, this unentitled residential, 3,300 acres and some change, a lot of it is already RR1 or higher in a, in a large way. And so we, we didn't know what we didn't know at the time. And so this kind of paints a substantially different picture than what we knew before. And I, and I for one wish we had had this before we ever agendized any of this stuff. But again, that's not on you, that's on us for not asking for the right thing. But that, to me, paints a substantially different picture than what I thought that might be out there. And I think Mr. Furman also made that point. So just wanted to share that. Mr. Denver?
I'm, I'm just a little bit confused. If you look up in my district, the yellow areas, as I remember, were placed as high density by the council not too long ago. If we were to put 15,000 square foot minimums or no apartments, it totally goes, it does it, if, if we take away the, the high density that you, we put up there because no other district, no other district wanted it, and we had to have certain amount of it in order to get through our California permission to have a general plan, how do we now switch it to 15,000 square foot lots? Or how do we switch it to no apartments? Or how do we do all that without having to redo our entire general plan and move it down, which is a good idea, into some of the other districts?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Denver, keep, keep in mind that this does not include those areas that were changed to that high density and added into the Romaland area. I just couldn't get that shape file done in time for, for tonight's meeting. But your point, your point is, is well taken.
That yellow area in there isn't what was decided? It was next to it or something?
It's actually on the far right of your screen, just above Matthews, I believe. It's a triangle piece just below Matthews, which cuts across your, your map there to the west.
Okay, I understand. If that's the case.
Of Heritage Lakes.
Then, then that property there that's yellow is a large acreage lot or industrial?
What it is, is it's, it's, it's not entitled. So we don't have the, the underlying zoning underneath it. It could be two point, it could be 2.1 to 5. It could be, it could be one acre minimums. But it is available residential, undeveloped, unentitled property.
But the yellow is residential?
Correct.
On here? Okay.
But you, that begs another question from my perspective for Mr. Leclerc, is that I would venture to say that a lot of this unentitled area still has underlying zoning issues that we inherited from the county that didn't, that don't necessarily match the general plan land use that we approved on December 18th. And that's some of the stuff that we have to clean up. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir, that is.
Is there more staff report to the agenda item?
The only other issue that we have is going into discussion and consideration of apartment structure uses in the city and the option of doing an adoption of an energy ordinance, which has been prepared by the city attorney and is in your packet. I can throw it to Mr. Leclerc if he has some additional comments.
Just want to point out to you that your limitations, that in a moratorium would have to be at a four-fifths vote of the council. That moratorium would be only for 45 days. And 10 days prior to the expiration of that 45 days, staff would have to submit to you and you would have to accept a report on the progress of that moratorium. And that you could extend the moratorium based upon that report for either 10 and a half months or 21 and a half, 22 and a half months to make it two years, and that would be the absolute maximum. The purpose and intent of a moratorium is to establish a, hold a status quo situation so that it gives the city sufficient time to review whatever the issue is that's being dealt with under the moratorium and allows the city time to create standards, change things, or determine that no changes are necessary. With that, you have in front of you two proposed moratoriums that are completely at your discretion as to whether or not you choose to move forward. There is language within the reports that identify specific concerns and health, safety issues that would be in support of the moratoriums. With that, I could try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. Gentlemen, where, where are we at with this?
I, I would point out in reference to a general plan, most cities that have a great deal of acreage, a great deal of rural area generally end up cannibalizing some of that over time and they modify their plans, or that's been the history of most cities. I was surprised to see two moratoriums on the agenda. The council request of staff regarding lot size did not, did not request a, a moratorium. I can understand why the staff may have put it that way because they were trying to make sure things were, stayed in place until such time that we achieved what we were after. And once again, even on the lot size and on apartments, the whole purpose really came down to the larger lot size, we're hopefully going to be generating more money, so maybe we came into it from the wrong way. Let me just make some comments here, Mr. Mayor, and then I want to make a motion that I hope and think will be perhaps compatible with the entire council. The residents of Minnefee, if you like, residents of any city who have invested their money into a home must concern themselves about whether or not their government has met its responsibility in providing conditions that allow for a long-term probability of success for the investment of their money and the well-being of their families. As a proliferation of new cities emerges, there is evidence that some cities have failed to meet their obligations to establish a viable tax base and predictable funding mechanisms to avoid eventually imposing financial hardship and disruptive life changes for their citizens. Such hardships usually manifest themselves as a city ages and budget constraints reflected in the deferred maintenance of infrastructure and human resources. As residential housing expands, there is a greater demand for city services. If there has been poor planning or a lack thereof by the city for adequate funding for future services, the citizens will likely experience a gradual degrading of their quality of life. For example, traffic will impose longer waits. Beautification and landscaping will often be scrapped because of higher budget priorities. And further budget constraints deny the use of code enforcement officers to address neighborhood requests and the proliferation of graffiti. As the suggested minimums of police officers are unmet, crime increases such as assaults, burglaries, car thefts, and home invasions. You'll find that happening as cities cycle. You'll find it in some cities near us currently. As a quality of life continues to decline, those most capable of supporting the tax base and sales tax revenue move. Home prices decline and the quality of the schools also decline. The population that remains is the most vulnerable, such as the poor and the elderly. This unfortunate scenario has been repeated in a number of cities across California and all across this nation because well-intended elected bodies lack sufficient experience and training or will have been corrupted in spite of good training. There are some members of this current council who are concerned that this economic misfortune could possibly impact Minnefee in our future unless corrective actions are taken. Others scoff at the idea of Minnefee getting into economic trouble and point to our recently passed general plan as evidence that all is well. It might be wise to review some of our city's brief history and the evolution of its general plan to see if such comfort is warranted. While tax base management and future funding mechanisms can be a consideration of a general plan, it may not be the primary concern of a general plan. The failure and decline of a number of cities which have a general plan is testimonial to this fact. This is of special concern for newer cities such as Minnefee. As the city ages, there will be a stronger demand for city services. If a significant number of housing projects are approved, then the demand for future services can grow exponentially. This is especially true if the emphasis is on affordable housing without adequate development of move-up housing. If a careful analysis of the available disposable income of some needed percentage of the city's current and future residents is not done in conjunction with a desired commercial development, then the long-range prognosis for the city's health and quality of life might well be in jeopardy. The citizens of Minnefee should be, as was pointed out tonight, should be aware that the bulk of the available land now left for development in, in Minnefee has already been tied up with tentative tract maps for affordable housing in the midst of a blitz, thousands of dollars of campaign funds. Also, there is an opportunity to encroach on the rural area. There are a number of historical and current reasons why the citizens of Minnefee might wish to be further assured of adequate future funding of city services and wish further study of their general plan considering the particulars of this evaluation. For example, one, the original Minnefee administration and city council lacked both sufficient academic training and hands-on experience to lead a new city. It was perhaps this lack of experience on the city council's part that led to the hiring of a city manager who had also never been a city manager. Compounding the hiring of an inexperienced person, inexperienced person as a city manager was a dubious conduct whereby more than one council person in charge of selecting the city manager solicited and accepted campaign contributions from the winning candidate who then became the new city manager. This practice of accepting money from persons seeking employment with the city is still current with our current council. The previous person acting as the city's planning director was described by one of our city's previous city managers as completely unqualified for the job. It appears that that planning director, which was our planning director until very recently, also had no previous experience as a planning director for being hired and was trained academically in childhood education. This information is important because the director of planning is the most important city employee contributing toward the development of the general plan. Four, these unfortunate set of circumstances probably contributed to the extraordinary delay of several years in the final completion of the city's general plan, in spite of the fact that the city spent well over $1 million in outside consulting fees to assist the city in completing the plan. Consequently, the current city manager and staff and city council face challenges in completing the plan within the legal, or at least the preferred timeframe. By the time the plan was near conclusion, there was clearly a sense of pressure among staff and the city council to expedite the process. This caused some observers to conclude that the city general plan was finally completed in a heated rush. Compounding this heated rush, to compete, to complete the plan was the fact that several former and current council persons who would make the final decision on the passage of the plan were receiving and did receive thousands of dollars from developers and local acquaintances who had vested interest in how the plan would be completed. It would be naive to assume that both staff and consultants were not presented to concede to the wishes of particular special interest because of the power of the city council and the political and personal motivations of this council. Six, it is probable that the average citizen homeowner in Minnefee is unaware that the bulk of the developable land in our city has already been tied up by developers, which was spoken to tonight, involving political pressure and campaign funds which perhaps paid less attention to future funding than prudence would have dictated. Seven, inexperience appears to have led a number of elected officials in Minnefee to have a misunderstanding as to the use of TUMP funds. TUMP funds are one-time mitigation fees paid by developers to help defer a cost of their development projects, such as infrastructure. Such funds do not take into consideration the future costs of services. TUMP funds can act as a kind of Ponzi scheme to the unsuspecting elected official since further development will call for further infrastructure, which in turn leads the elected official to believe further development is required to further TUMP funds, which eventually leads to a dead end. Chasing TUMP funds does not answer the need for permanent cost recovery from required ongoing maintenance. And lastly, eight, counting rooftops is the mantra of many elected officials and administrators as the holy grail to catch new business. Simply counting rooftops can lead to a proliferation of McDonald's, Taco Bells, and Walmarts, but it is not sufficient by itself to provide the amenities required by a population that would have the kind of disposable income to provide a permanent, ongoing support for a successful city. The logistics of a city's sphere of influence, its ease of ingress egress, and especially its socioeconomic profile are as important for certain businesses and more important than counting rooftops. Counting rooftops is a one-dimensional process that can lead a city toward financial heartache. Someone maintain, some would maintain this has been a weakness in Minnefee's planned development process. Counting rooftops does not take into consideration a successful city's need to have a certain percentage of citizens with a high disposable income. The above considerations are just some examples as to why at least some council members wish to have an in-depth review of our city's housing and commercial development within the context of our city's ability to produce future revenue streams sufficient to protect the investment and lifestyle of our city's residents. In addition, and, and, and at least to provide protection of our development choices provided by staff through the utilization of the magnitude of staff's planning discretion. So I want to make a motion, and I'm going to make it as follows, and I've already given this motion to the city clerk. The Minnefee City Council directs staff to begin the process of a comprehensive study that will convince the council and Minnefee homeowners that the current tax base, residential disposable income, and all other predictable sources of income will meet the service needs and quality of life needs of the citizens of Minnefee when projected out 10 years. Because the people who own home, who own homes today, if those costs aren't projected accurately, they're going to be in trouble in a very short time and have had a very poor investment. This study should involve a needed number of public workshops in order that each city department can project the city's demand for that department 10 years out and identify both the city's demand for that department 10 years out and identify both the quality of service anticipated and the source of revenue that cover the cost of those services. For example, public works would define the nature of our infrastructure 10 years out and the projected revenues that would cover those costs. The quality of work would be defined, would be defined by such metrics as grades anticipated for our roads, both as to their surface and the traffic flow. Will the grades be above some of the county's projections? Because those are unacceptable to the citizens of Minnefee today. And if so, identify the revenue source. Will we need to bypass roads or? Will we need to bypass roads or have bypass roads to maintain adequate traffic flow because of the county's anticipated build-out on the east side of Menifee? And if so, where are those revenues? The planning department will need to show us where our future revenues are once TUMP funds are essentially no longer available. And since the city has had such a demonstrable hunger for TUMP funds and rooftops, show us how we will be funded from our existing housing stock without encroaching on our rural area in search of more revenue. The general plan is no defense since it is easily amended. Our safety personnel such as police need to tell us what they will need to expect based on their projected population in 10 years and where the revenue will come from. They are the largest part of our budget. Most people have projected more mass transit in 10 years. Do we have a plan for metrolink coming through our city? Are we advocating it? Where will it go if it comes? Will it change the projected densities in our general plan? The premise for the request of this comprehensive study is motivated by the concern on the part of the council, or at least part of the council, given the city's history and the circumstances involving the evolution of the general plan, that inadequate attention has been placed on tax-based management. The concern is that not enough move-up housing has been provided in our housing mix to provide needed revenue and consequently the current quality of life for Menifee may not be sustainable and to meet the desired commercial goals may not be attainable unless corrective action is taken. This study seeks quality, not quantity, wishes thoroughness, and consequently there is no expected time constraints as long as progress is self-evident. Since the council anticipates the possibility of a shortfall of revenue in the future, staff is directed to strongly encourage all development projects to emphasize the need to provide higher projected disposable income from those projects. This is not to suggest that staff attempt to interfere with anybody's vested interest or anybody's attempts to pursue the establishment of vested interest. Sorry to read that so long. But that in effect is what, and I would like a second to that motion, it's rather lengthy, but again, to emphasize what it's about. The concern on the part of the council is that the housing development that we've had in Menifee and are having does not consider our tax base in such a manner that there will be enough disposable income in the future to meet the needed requirements when there is a greater emphasis on maintenance when the city ages. And that appears to be the situation as we see it. If the study demonstrates that is not the case, then fine. We don't need larger lots. The purpose of larger lots is produce more revenue. But there is a concern also about the requirement of the city on the amenities we want. We're looking for some upscale restaurants. We're looking for some amenities that we do not yet have, and so far we haven't been successful. And part of the reason perhaps for the lack of success is because we don't have enough disposable homes with enough disposable income to attract the kinds of businesses that we're after. In any event, you've heard the motion, we can go back over it again, do I have a second?
Madam Clerk, could you restate the motion, please? How much time do you need? Could you simplify?
Yes.
What I heard is something about a study.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure I can, but I'm going to have to clarify. The council directs staff to begin the process of a comprehensive study that will convince the council and homeowners that the current tax base residential disposable income and all other predictable sources of income will meet the service needs and quality of life needs of the citizens of Menifee when projected out 10 years. This study would involve the needed number of public workshops.
Can I interrupt? Can we just, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, can we just abbreviate your motion for a quality of life study? That's what you're asking for. I mean, the motion can be in there. We're not going to record three pages of a motion in the record.
The whole purpose, when we had so many arguments over the months over housing, it is really because some of the council have been concerned that special interest have driven a type of housing that does not provide enough disposable income, houses that do not have enough disposable income. And we've seen that happen in any number of cities, and it bites them in the long run. It's happening right now in Hemet, but you have other cities that have literally gone bankrupt because while they continue to just push rooftops, in the final analysis, they don't pay attention to tax-based management as they determine what kind of housing they want in there. Perhaps our position is okay, but let's have a study that emphasizes the revenue so that we don't back into it the other way, rather than assume that we're not going to have enough revenue and ask for larger lots. Let's ask the question, is the revenue there? If it's there, we don't need to back into that. If it isn't there, then yes, we need to revisit our general plan. But it would be backwards to start by reviewing your general plan unless you first determine if that revenue is going to be forthcoming. And there's no evidence at the time that it will be.
So I believe the motion is for a quality of life survey with a fiscal impact of the future residential and commercial development.
And if I'm reading it properly, in the written version, the words this study should involve, it could have everything above that because that's just explaining why the actual motion can just be that have current tax-based residential disposable income and all other predictable sources, quality of life needs when projected out 10 years.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's a good executive summary, yes. Now, the deputy mayor has made a motion, is there a second? Not yet, so.
I want to hear from what the deputy mayor has to say about what Ms. Bennett just read back.
From the what?
What were your comments with Ms. Bennett just read?
I don't have a particular concern about that. My primary concern is that we do have a comprehensive study, and this will involve, as I pointed out, a number of workshops. And the fear is, and let's get the facts so that we have neither fear or optimism, but the fear is that the way our housing has been developed in this city and the way it's projected to continue to develop, based on most of our land out there already been taken by current tentative tract maps, that the tax base, the revenue that it's going to generate by way of the homeowners that would go into those affordable homes, will not have enough disposable income to support the future maintenance costs which will climb exponentially as this city ages and also will not support the kind of amenities, restaurants, et cetera, that most of the people in this city are looking forward to having. So we really need a cost analysis of what we have done. So we don't start leading people down the primrose path and ending up like Hemet and some of the cities around us and having our community degrade because our money wasn't there.
Mr. Denver?
Excuse me.
Point of order. I don't understand why we're voting on something that is not on the agenda. Two, I have not had a chance to study this, I have not had a chance to think about it, I don't want to vote on it, and none of us should vote on anything. This should be at least a meeting or two off, and we should all have a chance to look at it. How in the world are you going to vote for something that's not on the agenda?
I'm going to try to address that, Mr. August.
I'm going to go ahead and, after we hear from the attorney, I'm going to go ahead and second the mayor as Ms. Bennett read it.
The deputy mayor.
Deputy mayor, as Ms. Bennett read it back, that's agreeable to Mr. Edgerton. And I want to say, we have people out in the audience, we have BIA out there, I'm sure they're going to get up to the podium tonight. We did say at the last meeting, I pointed out some of my concerns about some of the concerns that he has. And I would hope that a quality of life study would include, would be very expansive. I mean, I'm talking about, maybe we can talk about the impacts of the federal estate and the economies and things like that because it's pretty much trickle-down stuff and it can affect the city of Menifee, and I'm very, very concerned. The Chamber of Commerce, the Commerce Department from the federal government yesterday said construction's up 16.7 percent, and then they turn around and say, but you know, we don't know why sales are down. So we have a lot, there's a lot to look at here as far as, because those houses, we have many, many, we have thousands of houses projected to come in here. I'm concerned about the variety, I'm concerned about the disposable income that the deputy mayor talks about, I'm secured about, do we have that necessary socioeconomic group built in to the plans of the city? And all we want to do is have a discussion, like I said last week, Mr. Brink can ship, we need to map this out and have a discussion. So that's the reason why I'm going to second Mr. Edgerton's motion.
Madam Attorney.
This brings to mind something that I called to your attention some time ago in an experience I had in the city of Golita. And it seems to me that what Mr. Edgerton is getting at here is that you want to find a way to assure that as residential development occurs, there will be other development that counterbalances that in terms of generating revenues, so that there are revenues down the line to provide maintenance, to provide infrastructure as necessary. And Golita had what's called the Golita Growth Management Ordinance that specifically tied residential development to concurrent commercial and retail other development with the idea that residential development never carries its own weight in terms of tax revenues. Commercial development pays for a bigger share of that. So that's just a model, that's not anything written in stone. But I think that the kind of study that Mr. Edgerton is looking for is one that seeks a balance over the long term so that later residents are not overly burdened with taxes to cover maintenance because it wasn't well-planned at this point. At least that's what I would suggest.
Before we entertain the motion and call for question and have additional discussion and actually call speakers, how do we take care of the effect of the two agenda items that are on the agenda? Do we not have to take a motion to table those? Or does the motion that has been made take care of both of those agenda items? I don't think they do.
Well, there are two agenda items. One is discussion and consideration of apartment structure uses in the city, and this sort of doesn't address that, although it does ultimately. And the other is discussion and consideration of lot size minimum. Again, it's an inclusive part of what's being suggested. The moratoriums that have been proposed here were requested by the council, and so we provided that, but certainly.
Excuse me, point of order, Madam Counsel. The council did not request a moratorium on the limited lot size. That was staff's reaction to the council request. The council was definitive about not asking for a moratorium on lot size. But be that as it may, both of the topics were being driven by the fact of a concern about revenue coming into the city. And therefore, I would contend that the motion that has been made is in reference to the revenue and disposable income that's coming into the city, whether you go to 15,000 square foot lots, 20,000 square foot lots, or there's no need to go into that at all because the revenue is already there.
I disagree. Could you finish your analysis, please?
Well, the discussion that I heard was not of tax revenues, but rather of wanting higher-end housing so you would attract people with more disposable income. And that seems to be your gist here. And that was originally proposed with regard to the larger lot sizes. If the lot sizes are larger, the houses will be more expensive, people with more means will come to Menifee, and you will have a higher level of income among your residents. I'm not sure that you, I'm not sure if that's what your motion actually does.
No, you've certainly hit the nail on, you've hit the mark in reference to what we're after. The difference is, though, that when you talk about that thing happening in Golita and in Escondido, those particular types of things were passed when there was ample property left to develop. In our city, as has been pointed out tonight by the city manager, there's very little amount of property left to develop. So the council is saying, before we proceed and before we go any further, where are we in reference to revenue? I cannot today look out and tell those people that are investing in the homes that we have available, most of them are, most of all of our homes are affordable homes, that is, they're available to first-time buyers. Do they have an investment that the city's going to be able to hold sustainable 10 years from now? And we should be able to give them an answer. We have never looked at that, and it has been this unwritten tension on the council where some of us have been demanding that we have more move-up homes to generate that disposable income to support the lifestyle they want and to maintain their investment in their home, and those who maintain that the status quo is okay. So rather than argue about it, let's get to facts.
So back to my original question of the staff here is, we need to handle, we need to take care of 12.1 and 12.2 on the agenda. The motion that's been made does not do that. So I would like a modified motion, if you would consider modifying your motion. Your motion's a good motion, it's fine, it's been seconded, but would you consider modifying your motion to table those two agenda items as part of your motion?
You mean the two moratoriums?
Yes.
Motion? I would do that if it's acceptable to the city attorney.
Okay, would you, is that your motion then, sir?
Yes.
All right, do you second that?
Yes.
Very well, okay. Now that we got that housekeeping taken care of, can we take some public commenters?
Yes, we can. And is this just going to be on 12.1 then?
Let's take, if it's okay with the attorney, can we take both?
Run through, sure. There are some duplications, that's why I'm checking.
Yeah, just run through them all.
You've got it. Les Nursey?
Sorry to bore you with my presence again, but I'm sure we'll have the same at this meeting. Last meeting, we had several representatives of developers and building associations show up to tell us how important it was for Menifee to build more apartments in high density. In fact, to listen to them, it appeared that anyone who disagreed couldn't be in full possession of their faculties. I guess that means, gentlemen, if you're still here today, the vast majority of the citizens of Menifee have got to be crazy. Because I've talked to everybody around my subdivision of Menifee South, which for those who don't know it, is a multiracial community of several hundred single-family homes, mostly young couples with kids looking to stay long-term and hopefully move up. And when I asked them their views, I'll repeat their words, not mine. So they may not be very PC, but this is what they said. We don't want any more apartments. They attract lowlifes. They attract drugs. Look at Marietta. They bring crime in general, and we don't have enough police now. They bring more traffic, they use more water, we don't want to become a San Bernardino, a Moreno Valley, or a Hemet. Most importantly, they then go on to say, who is it on the council that can't see that? It's obvious. And I say, yeah, well, there's a couple who disagree, and they respond, yeah, the ones who were paid off by the developers, to which of course I have no comment. Gentlemen, there's an election coming up, the voters are asking The voters are asking questions, they're protecting their turf, they're protecting their families. Those of you who are taking money from developers, will you be telling us how much you've had from the developers we're talking about here? The ones who want more high-density development? If not, why not? Do you have something to hide? And don't say, read my Form 460, because everybody knows it's impossible to figure out who's who on that. So help us out. Tell us precisely who these people are and in what way they relate to apartment and high-density planning. There's an election coming up. I challenge the mayor, the whole council, Council of Denver includes you, to tell us whether a development proposal comes before the council, whether you've taken money from the developer involved, as simple as that. If you won't take the pledge, and you won't stop taking money, then the voters at least want to know what you're taking and from whom, in a straightforward, easy-to-understand manner. And if you won't, why not? I repeat, do you have something to hide?
Next speaker, please.
Tim Johnson. Sorry, Tim Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tim Johnson. Excuse me, I'm getting a little cold, so. I'm the executive director for the California Apartment Association in the Greater Inland Empire. We are the largest rental, rental industry apartment association in the Inland Empire. We represent just over 1,000 members and just over 65,000 units statewide. We have 50,000 members and just represent over 200, or 2 million units. In regards to tonight, I was coming here to talk about the issues that you have when you're looking at moratoriums on apartment. But I'll give you some really quick facts that can be explained. Apartments actually do generate income for your city. Renters actually spend more money than owners of single-family homes. Actually, 70% of those funds or their income is spent locally in the city. They spend 18% more than homeowners actually in their cities. They attract young education, educated professionals. Gen Y is moving into apartments. If you want to attract those individuals with high incomes into your city, you're going to have to have the diversity of housing. Also, too, your senior citizens are moving at a greater rate into apartments. These aren't just specific studies, or this is not my word, these are facts that are moving in that direction. In regards to a well-planned city, requires flexibility and diversity in housing. Great example of that, there was talk of Moreno Valley, Hemet. All the cities are, have their own challenges, but there is one city out there that tends to be a model for most Inland Empire cities. It's Rancho Cucamonga. Per capita, they have more apartments than any other city in the Inland Empire. They have the highest median income, and they also have the highest median home prices. Apartments don't drive down prices of homes. They actually complement it. You want diversity, you want sustainability within your city, you attract young professionals. Yes, sooner or later, they may get married, they may not, but ultimately, you need housing to attract them, to retain them, and then have them spend money in your city, which ultimately equates to sales tax. Give you a quick example, average community in your city is 250 units. Those, out of those 250 units, more than 300 jobs are created, and over $5 million annually is spent by those renters in those 250 units. So if you're looking at sustaining.
Your time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Can I ask a question, sir?
Yes, sir.
What's the average, what's the median income of the people that are in those apartments you're talking about?
In regards to your average rent in Rancho.
Median income of the people renting those apartments.
Your average rent is 1,800 units, or $1,800 a month to move.
What's the median income of the people renting those apartments?
Over, over 60,000.
Pardon?
Over 60,000.
60,000, okay. And what do you, have any, the average size of the rentals?
Average size, square foot?
Yeah.
It's two-bedroom, two-bath, ranges anywhere between 1,300 and 1,400 square feet.
Okay, all right. And if we, as we continue the discussion, I, I look forward to talking to you again.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Egerton?
Yeah, I, I, first of all, I, I don't think it's helpful to put apartments into categories of either they're horrible or they're wonderful. My own experience in representing another large city was that nobody argues against apartments, there needs to be a sufficient number of apartments. But when you start congregating in them, when you start getting too much density, it does seem to impact the socioeconomic profile in a downward way, and that was our experience in a larger city. And, and it caused certain neighborhoods to dramatically deteriorate and increase the drug trade and, and crime. So I think it's a, you know, it's, it's a matter of, of how much and where you put them, rather than they're either good or horrible.
Next speaker, please.
Bill Blankenship.
Good evening. My name's Bill Blankenship. I'm the chief executive officer of the Riverside County Building Industry Association. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak about these two issues. Originally, I had planned to talk about moratoriums and why moratoriums are bad. I welcome a study. I guess what I would urge this council to do before you embark on a study like that, you find out the cost of it, I would believe it would be very expensive, but it doesn't mean it's not worthy and worth doing. I think you should know the price of it before you tell staff to go in a certain direction. I think more data is good, and I'm hopeful that this council, once they see the data, will embrace it, even though they may not like it, and move forward and, and allow staff and our industry to move forward in partnership to build a great community. And that's all I have to say this evening. Sure.
Thank you again for coming, and I'm probably a little surprised about how it turned out. But I, I just want you to know, I am still for more variety in housing. I, Mr. Egerton didn't mention it tonight, but I think it's key and essential for the city to, to, to keep the rural area and protect the rural area as much as we can. I am for, I, I asked the staff the other day, I said, well, who's Mr. Blankenship? I know you, you're not a builder or developer, you just represent a lot of them, but who are you selling these houses to? And as I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, the cost of operating, maintaining houses is going up all the time for people, and I'm really concerned about the DTIs. And, and somebody asked me, well, is that really our business? Do you think that should be the city's business, Mr. Blankenship? About how much income, how much extra income should a person have in a house where it's not all cut up in the operation-maintenance? Should that be part of the city council's job, to, to see who the development industry is selling those houses to?
Well, be it far from me to tell you what you should care about and not care about as an elected official in your community.
You tell us everything else.
I don't think so. I, I would say that that decision ultimately is made between the person who's giving out the loan to that family to determine that they're eligible for that loan. The standards are very high today. I think a lot of lessons were learned from the previous cycle, and the industry certainly isn't going to be building houses that aren't sustainable in a community and aren't sustainable to the market. And who are, who are buying these houses? They're families. They're young families, they're experienced families, they're move-up buyers who are coming to your community, they're move-down buyers, coming from Orange County, move-down is just a term from somebody who's coming from a more expensive home in the coastal area and coming out here maybe to retire, or maybe to have more disposable income, which is what Mayor Pro-Tim Egerton is, is seeking here. So those are who are, are, my understanding, who are coming into your community, and I, I would hope that you would want those families here.
But, but let me ask you, let me, last question I'll ask you. What do, what do you think is a good debt-to-income ratio?
I have no idea.
Do you think, once again, do you think we should, do you think we should care about that? When we're allowing people to come into our city and develop, develop, and put more houses in? Do you, do you think we should ask that question?
I don't know how you ask that of a buyer. I think that is a question that is answered, like I said, between who's financing the loan and that family.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Egerton.
Just a point of order, the, the federal government and the state, the loan associations do set a standard for debt-to-equity ratios on homes right now. Used to be 25%. I think now it's all the way up to 31.
Next speaker, please.
Nathan Miller.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for having me here today. I, I too is also going to speak, obviously, to the items that were actually agendized, the moratoriums, as were requested at the last city council meeting. But instead, I'll, you know, obviously speak to the study. I, I too think that it's a good idea to get more information. Obviously, cost is something that the council should heavily weigh in making that decision, and obviously, the benefits that come from it. I did want to talk a little bit about a sister city that's not too far away, the city of Eastvale. Both Menifee and Eastvale incorporated roughly around the same time. I think Menifee was first. And they're nearly built out in Eastvale. And they're, you know, they have a diversity of development, a lot of high-density development, affordable housing. There's an article that was in the Press Enterprise that I'd like to quote. Get to it, there was a staff person that, that had stated to the person interviewing me, I wish I had a nickel for every time somebody said, where the hell is Eastvale? The reason why that's important is because when they showed US Census figures, that Eastvale had a median household income of nearly $106,000, the highest of any city in Western Riverside County, the tenor of the conversation swiftly changed, and it goes on to discuss how at that event where they were at, where they were talking about, talking to commercial developers and retailers, their city council were swarmed by, by these retailers that were seeking to do busy, business in that city, once they understood the nature of, of the clientele base that was there, the fact that they had a huge median income. And the point of that is this, high-density, low-density, as Deputy Mayor Egerton mentioned earlier, all apartments aren't crappy. There are great apartments, there are bad apartments. Lowlifes, I think there was a statement made about lowlifes being attracted to apartments. Lowlifes can be attracted to low-density housing, high-density housing, apartments. Great people can be attracted to all three. There's no study that correlates that. A lot of it, I mean, there are a lot of factors that are just completely outside of the realm of the actual type of development that will affect what kind of people are in there. Some of those things are out of the control of the, of the city council. Hemet was in a situation, I think, that got hit by the recession, and a bad situation went, went, went south fast, and it's unfortunate for them, and they're trying to climb out of that hole. But the city of Menifee was featured in a Press Enterprise article because the majority of the residents here appreciate the quality of life. What the city has been doing has been good. People are moving here because they like it. People are staying here because they like the direction of the city. And to assume that changing that direction vastly would, would be good flies in the face of the actual experience that the residents of Menifee have had. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mike Mudd.
Mayor, council members, and staff, I was up here talking at the last meeting about a number that was projected. This, this is work that's been put together by the city for the EWDC in conjunction with WRCOG, I believe, last March 20th. The number that I presented to council and was in, the mayor had indicated that my numbers were incorrect for the build-out number. As you can see here on this page, the area population over 300,000 at build-out. Now, you might say, well, that has to do with the cities that are adjacent to us and their, their effect on the city. Regardless, if, if we're talking about 186,000, we're still talking 114,000 people that will affect our city, that are, that are adjacent to our city. So when you say the effect of the, on the roads, on congestion, what have you, this really is a real, a real number. The number for the trade, excuse me, the trade area, over 740,000 people will, will have an effect, again, on our roads and congestion and what have you. I have another chart here. This is, again, all put together by our city, not by me. These are not my numbers. We have the average income just over $60,000. I, I have a hard time believing that the average income in our city today, in the financial straits that we're all in, is really at 60,000. I really do not buy that number, but that's what we have here. In the planning, we're looking at having a, a mix. Somebody that is in the note told me that, you know, when we have downturns in different types of sectors, in, in the commercial, in the, the retail, that you have to build the corridor. I don't see any, any growth in, in our, in our economic corridors. I just don't see what's happening. I mean, we're not building tilt-ups, we're not doing this, that, and the other thing, which is causing small businessmen to move into areas that they normally wouldn't move into. Where is our economic development going in our corridors?
That's your time.
That's the big question. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Marty Lands.
Mayor and councilmen, appreciate you taking time tonight. My perspective on this whole 15,000-square-foot minimum and so forth, I believe that there is a need for all, all the above. We definitely have a need for everything from apartments to larger move-up homes. We don't have a great number of move-up homes, higher-end-up homes. We do need that in the, we need the whole, we need the whole gamut of properties available to our people. I'm in real estate, I deal with these people on a daily basis, and we have all kinds coming in. And truly, it is, there is a missing link, a missing portion, which is move-up homes. I believe we should have some of that. I think we need to be careful on the mix that we're doing. I, I really applaud the idea of, of the study, to get some real figures and numbers of what we need to do, and then move forward with it. But apartment complexes, you can get some really nice apartment complexes, and they don't have to be just real high-density, but they can be, you know, like they said, 1,400, 1,500 square foot, two-bedroom, three-bedroom needed, needed apartment complexes. We have a need for the whole gamut. We have a need for every property type available to us. And we does, and, and then as far as the move-up, I think move-up properties are long-term, long-term investment. People that are going to be in our median-income families, looking to move up, let's keep them here in the city. Let's put some, let's put some, some together. I think we just got to be careful at how we do it and how much we actually dedicate that much property to. It was an eye-opener tonight to see the amount of property that was, or the little amount of property that's available to us to build, and I think you're right. I think we need to be careful on what it is we're doing and plan accordingly. So appreciate your time.
I, I wanted to, I, I, first of all, those are pretty much my sentiments exactly. He said it better than I could, but it was kind of funny, last week, when we had Mr. Blankenship and several developers and everybody over here saying they had all had lunch in Mr. Egerton's backyard, and he provided lunch for him, and Judy, we had some, a glass of wine, they had some coke and things like that, but when you talk about move-up homes, it, it seems like all the But when you talk about move-up homes, it seems like all the people that were in this room, everybody's been to Mr. Egerton's house with a 15,000-square-foot lot, with a swimming pool, nicely landscaped backyard, a nice place to have lunch. And that's only a 15,000-square-foot lot. That's kind of a move-up home. But Mr. Egerton's gonna retire someday, and we're not gonna, everybody in the city and all the developers is not gonna have a place to go have lunch. So I would think we need some more move-up housing in the city.
Next speaker, please.
Gene Wonderlick.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak to you again. I was going to, obviously, like the other speakers, I was concerned about the possibility of a moratorium, which was why I was here this evening. It didn't sound, from the agenda, like it was even applicable to just the unentitled land. It sounded like something that you wanted to put in place immediately and make every lot 15,000 square feet and up. I would caution you that just, using the term "moratorium" is an ugly word. It scares people. You know, just saying it out loud sometimes, having it on the agenda is enough to scare people away. Companies, for example, that might have built the types of homes that you want, companies that might have opened stores and brought more jobs to the city, companies that don't just bring retail jobs, but the kind of sustainable, good-paying jobs that all of our cities desperately need. So I'm just concerned that using the term "moratorium," you kinda put a big warning sign out there that the council or members of the council lean toward a building moratorium, and that concerns a lot of folks. I did want to address one other issue, as I did, and I represent about 4,000 realtors as Government Affairs Director for the Southwest Riverside County Association of Realtors. We have an office here in Menifee, one in Murieta and one in Hemet. So we've got the bases covered, apparently. But contrary to what some of you may believe, the realtors, developers and so forth are not all rapacious beings. We don't just sell houses. You know, we sell a quality of life, a healthier community, a better environment for realtors and our customers, your residents. Keeping a community attractive, livable and functioning well is a complex task, as you well know. Individually and through our associations, realtors have been active in growth and land use issues for decades. In hundreds of communities just like this one across the country, realtors have become outspoken advocates for policies much like the one you're advocating this evening, to maintain the integrity of housing, housing markets by preserving choice and affordability without compromising the qualities that make communities desirable. So again, I applaud going forward with the study and looking, because you do need a variety of homes in the mix, because you do need that, everything from the move-up to the move, you know, to the retirement communities. And if you look at the demographics today, a lot of young folks are moving into apartments and congregated cities and congested areas, you know, where we wouldn't necessarily move, but they seem to like that. So, again, I applaud you, there are solutions available, and I know that, given the opportunity, you, you know, I challenge you to find those solutions for the betterment of your city here. So, thank you again for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sue Lopez.
Good evening. And again, thank you for everything, your services. I was going to retract my request to speak tonight because, and leave time for the experts, but time's almost over anyway, so I'll be real short. I just want to say that I did come tonight to say that I oppose the moratorium and that, but I've been listening to what I, and I kinda like what I hear, and I think it's a very good idea to do a survey or an investigation on it. However, as Mr. Blankenship said, I feel like, as a taxpayer, I'd like to know how much it's gonna cost and you do a really evaluation of, is it really worth it? And to evaluate how much it's gonna cost and how much of my taxpayer money you're gonna spend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Michael Van Dale.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Appreciate your time. It's a long night. Seems like a lot's been said about this subject. I agree with the previous speaker that the word "moratorium" is a frightening one, particularly for someone in our profession. It sounds like there's a concept to look at a study, which I think is a good idea. What I would request is that projects that are already moving through the process be given consideration for the time and effort that's been invested, to ask stakeholders on all sides of this issue for their input, and that's been taken to reflect all of that input in those projects. And that if a project has merit and it's in compliance with what the city currently has in place and it meets the needs of all the stakeholders, that it continue to move through the process and that the study wouldn't impede that.
You liked Mr. Egerton's house, too, didn't you?
Yes. I've been to the backyard.
By the way, I would have thought you would have heard in my very brief motion that, at the end, I pointed out that the study should not, that while the council is requesting an encouragement of move-up housing as a matter of direction by staff, they still work within the confines of what exists today, which means we don't impose upon anybody who already has a track map or who wants to present one and is within the framework of today's regulations.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Damon Gaskin.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members. My name is Damon Gaskon. I'm here tonight to represent Fred Fleming and the Fleming family. They're longtime property owners here in the city of Menifee. I think they've owned property here for about 60 years. Their property that I'm here to speak about is about 330 acres that's bounded on the west by Encanto, on the east by the future Antelope Road extension, and on the north by Ross Road, and the south is Chambers. We've been processing a specific plan in the city of Menifee for a number of years now, actually since the incorporation of the city. We're getting ready to move to the next step, and the idea of a 15,000-lot minimum standard is a very chilling effect on our opportunity to move forward. And there's a number of key reasons for that. It's not just the density and the number of homes that that will impact for our development and other developments, but the amount of general plan improvements that are gonna be required with a site of our size has to have enough revenue generated in order to build those general plan improvements. And these are improvements that are going to benefit all of the citizens and residents of Menifee, that are gonna provide access, gonna benefit from traffic, sewer, water. There are a number of benefits that this will bring to the city, but we can't do it if we have a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. So it would be a very chilling effect on a development like the Fleming Ranch, who is working on an integrated master-plan community. We've, I've heard tonight discussions of the quality of life and the buying or purchasing power of the residents that live in the city of Menifee. I don't think you get that with a lot size. In fact, I know you don't get that with a lot size. What you do get is high-quality development will bring high-quality people. And that is, that's designed in your development standards, and you dictate those development standards so that the new development meets the quality that you're looking for in your city, whether that's a density of 20 units to the acre or one unit to the acre. You have the ability to set those standards and to ensure that high-quality development comes to the city of Menifee. We are strong supporters, the Fleming family are strong supporters of the city of Menifee. We feel very good about the residents here. We'd like to be able to participate in its future growth, and that includes both our existing property that we're moving through the process, as well as other properties that the family owns that they would like to redevelop. That's what I have to say tonight. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker.
That is all the speakers.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for hanging in there and listening to the discussion. Where are we at with this agenda item?
Motion.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion from the council?
Is there no, is there, is it, it is not a point of clarity that we should have this, where we can each of us study it more? Often, this thing can be brought now. Madam Attorney, we can vote on something that none of us have seen before?
You can vote on something that none of you, that none of you have seen before in the context of these two discussion items. That is, this is, this is a discussion of apartment uses, and it's a discussion of lot size. And the motion that has been made is an effort to study these issues and then come back with presumably actions to be taken at some later date.
Is there any way that we could get a guesstimate of what this study and these hearings might cost?
I don't know of one. If you wanted to bring it back and have staff examine that first, that certainly would be an option, too.
Is there a way that we could have that brought back to us and we vote on this next meeting?
If I may interject, the way I heard the Deputy Mayor's motion is to give direction to staff to explore a quality-of-life financial survey. That would include bringing back financials, estimates, a list of workshops, maybe some scoping sessions with stakeholders, again, very similarly to what we did with the, frankly, the general plan, with countless scoping sessions with the community, 16 General Plan Advisory Committee meetings, 12 Planning Commission meetings and three council meetings, all culminating on the December 18th of 2013, with us deciding on 11 very, very specific recommendations from the Planning Commission. So I too have problems with spending some additional money on this, as has been reflected by some of the other speakers, but, you know, like the, like the map that we saw tonight, we don't know what we don't know in terms of cost. So I think that was your motion, was it not, was to explore those matters and bring it back for us to decide at that time? We're just giving direction to staff at this point to do that. And in your motion, as modified, was also tabling 12.1 and 12.2, as seconded by Mr. August.
It is not fair, then, to say, Mr. Mayor, that what we're really proposing to do is to do another general plan? Isn't that what we're really doing?
No.
Is just looking at everything all over again, costs, sizes, we have to get into the legal requirements of how much the sizes affect our ability to, I mean, aren't we just doing it all over again?
No, I don't think that, that wasn't the motion. We're, it's not a land-use map proposal here. We're talking about, City Manager, can you coach, guide the discussion here in terms of what you would do to reach out and do this, this financial? I will.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What I, what I'm gathering from the discussion is, really, it's a financial economics study. It's a model that's created and proposed over the next 10 years. It's a living, breathing opportunity, and when the pieces of the puzzle change, then the out, the outcome will change. And I think there is a way to set up a model like that. I can definitely do research. I know a couple people out there that we can get some proposals from. I can't tell you what it's gonna cost, 'cause I just don't know, but it will be a definite review of the general plan. It'll be a definite review of the economic development element and the community design element that were part of the general plan. That's a part of it. Because when you change those aspects of it and, or look at changing them, you're gonna have a different output on the other end. And I think that's the number that you wanna see. And so if that number matches what's already in the general plan, then what I heard, I believe, is that you're okay with that. If the number does not match the general plan, then we're gonna need to do further study and further change some options so that that number changes. That's what I'm hearing.
That's what I heard, too. Councilmember August.
I was gonna make a comment on that, and I haven't been through one of these studies before. They do have a habit that seems to cost a lot of money, and I certainly would take that into consideration. So not knowing what it's gonna cost, I'm certain I'll be willing to make some adjustments, considerations later. As far as Mr. Denver, and I understand Mr. Denver's questions on that, but at the last council meeting, when we were discussing moratoriums, and I remember that Mr. Denver has a way to kinda move us away from that, you were just basically saying you wanted to have a discussion. This appears it might be a little bit more than a discussion, but just let me leave those right there, right now, and I've already seconded the motions.
Mr. Egerton.
Yes, no, we're not going to reinvent the wheel here. All we're trying to do is say to a person, if you are going to invest in a piece of property in Menifee today, or for those of us who live in Menifee, I've lived here close to 20 years, I wanna know I have a good investment, I wanna know this is a place I can retire, and that 10, 10 years from now, my community is not going to denigrate into some of the city, like some of the cities that are surrounding us. And that really is a budget matter. And so when you look at a general plan and we look at all of these lot sizes, et cetera, what kind of funding do these houses generate and/or cost? Because most of your houses are a negative as far as service is concerned. So all we're trying to do is determine where are we so that we can go out with confidence and say to the community, it's not only a nice place to live, but 10 years from now, it's gonna be a nice place to live. It's not going to be a Hemet. It's not going to deteriorate. It's not going to go bankrupt like Stockton, et cetera. Any number of people who have had a general plan but didn't do a cost-benefit analysis in the process of developing that plan, and that's all we're doing. And as far as the cost of the study, we can make adjustments to that. There's no cost that's set in stone.
Mr. Furman.
Just an item on top of that, I think this future water discussion is gonna have, hopefully, a good input on the decision-making powers of this council also. That's why I'm anxious to see, and I think so is Greg. Where's the water at?
Is there any other discussion before we call the question? Just a couple comments about, Mr. Leclerc, what, could you list for us the elements of the general plan? I mean, there's, what, seven of them?
There are seven mandatory elements, and we have nine.
And we have nine. And did we not do an economic analysis as part of the general plan?
Yes, you did.
Is 'cause that's required by law?
I'm not sure it's required by law, but most communities do.
Well, good planning, good planning.
It was an additional element.
It was one of our additional ones that we did. So, man, I'm gonna have to look at the, if you, if you, if you do an RFP for this and we get some stuff in, I'm gonna have to balance that with what we've already done. Because I tend, I tend to, I have an agreement here with some both points up here. I'm not, I'm not at all comfortable with spending additional dollars when we've already made that assessment as part of our general plan process. We already did it, which is what resulted in the current land-use map that we have. And the, and as I said earlier, the land-use map that we were shown tonight had, was kinda eye-opening in terms of it actually addresses some of the stuff that was originally asked for. And so what I would, what I would ask, you know, as we go through these issues in the future, colleagues, if we could, if you could dial down exactly what it is that you're requesting so that we really don't end up, when we start in one council meeting and then we go to another and it changes, and we go to another and yet it changes again, that is exactly what has happened with this whole process. It started off as a discussion request from the Deputy Mayor on the 21st of May, who requested this item, a discussion of minimum lot sizes in the city in July or August, and staff put it on for August, and we had it at the August 6th council meeting. That discussion morphed into a request for a moratorium on apartments and an exploration of the 15,000-square-foot lot sizes in the rural RR1-type designation and all others. Now, we've morphed into, tonight, into a study of the impact of our general plan, which in part, we've already done. So even as, I'm gonna probably vote for this in favor tonight to move it forward, but I'm still scratching my head and asking my question after we've already spent $1.3 million, five years, we had a unanimous vote on the general plan, it's approved by the state, it's got all the environmental approvals, and I'm just scratching my head why. So I'm gonna call for the question.
Deputy Mayor Egerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember- Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
I'm making the assumption that we're going to be looking at the price and being able to decide things in the future. We'll be able to look at that, and under those conditions, I vote yes.
Mayor Man.
Aye. On to city attorney reports.
Nothing to report at this point. Oh, there was one thing. You have received, or we have on file, an argument against Measure K, and you have authorized the council to respond with a rebuttal. You may want to discuss logistically how you're going to do that. Only four of you signed as supporters of the pro argument.
Excuse me, only four of, I thought, that was a unanimous five and oh vote. Who didn't sign onto the measure?
Deputy Mayor Edgerton did not.
What is this?
You didn't sign onto the measure that you voted to put on ballot?
I was fishing.
Unbelievable.
At any rate, that needs to be done and filed by the twenty-eighth, so you may want to discuss how you want that done.
Can we have a ten-second discussion on that?
We can have a ten-second discussion.
Is the information on the opposite side of that measure, is this, are the numbers actually physically correct?
No.
I don't believe so. I haven't run the numbers. Haven't run the numbers. There is an argument, the question really is...
The argument suggests that there's an automatic annual increase, which is just untrue.
That's true.
The figures are untrue, and putting this measure on the ballot does not undermine the previous vote of the will of the Menifee voters in any way. It just ties the mayoral stipend, not salary, a stipend, to the statute, and restores it to what the voters originally voted on. Whether it's me or anybody else, it doesn't matter. So I would be in favor of writing a rebuttal.
I'm also in favor of writing a rebuttal. If these numbers are absolutely incorrect, if there's factual misinformation, cold, flat, factual misinformation, can't we, isn't there a legal way where you can flip this back to the person who wrote it and said, you have to at least be factually correct on your, on your numbers?
In order to do that, you would have to file a writ with the court, and the court would have to review it, it would be time involved.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
I don't think we have enough time for that, but...
It could be done, it could be done.
And Ms. Pika wrote the rebuttal.
The chief problem with ballot arguments generally is they are statements of opinion, and opinions vary, and what is true in one person's opinion is perhaps not true factually, but it becomes, it's a challenge to get a court to step in. It can be done.
Is there any opposition to writing a rebuttal argument?
No.
And I would suggest that you set up a procedure, who can sign off on it, so that you can get it done. That's all.
City Clerk?
Just wanted to make clear that any one of the signers can write it, so...
What of the people who signed it, signed the rebuttal? Same four.
And I would encourage, you know, the other unanimous voter to also sign onto it, unless you're going fishing again.
Actually, he didn't sign onto the other one, so he can't sign this.
Correct.
So, all right, is that, is there any dissension for the four to sign on the rebuttal? Hearing, hearing none?
Who's going to write it, sir?
Oh, staff will help us write, so we need the accurate language. I'm not going to, yeah. Okay. And, Mr. Manager, do we have a, it looks like we have a report tonight, however?
We do. Would you like us to move that off to the next one?
Well, you know, if it wouldn't upset the Community Services Director too much...
It's your discretion, they're just updates.
How many slides you got?
Eighty-two. No, I'm just kidding.
No, they're just mostly important dates, for the most part, and improvements to the parks that we've been doing lately, that's all.
Okay, let's do it.
Great. Before Robert starts, I do have an update. As council-directed on June eighteenth, myself and the management team from Falco or Menifee Plumbing came to an agreement, that this council required a three-year agreement for him to stay on that property. We've done that, we're finalizing the final signatures on it, and I will make sure that it gets routed. On to the Community Services update, Mr. Lennox.
Thank you, City Manager. I will be brief. Just a few items we'll go over this evening. First, I thank you to those that attended the National Night Out on the ninth, and I understand it was a wet one, but we had some folks in attendance regardless, so, good event. August eleventh, if you weren't aware, that was first day of Pierce Unified High School District, and then the eighteenth, which was Monday, for Menifee Unified School District. An upcoming important date is for Friday, the deadline for the Youth Advisory Committee applications is upon us. So, if there are any candidates out there who want to get their apps in, that is the date. We'll be coming back to council, which is part of the next slide.
The YAC is upon us.
The YAC, yes, the YAC is upon us. And so the commission's last meeting was a special meeting on the fourteenth, some great goal-setting outcomes from that meeting. The next one is on the twenty-eighth. Senior Advisory, last meeting was on the twenty-second of July. We will also be doing a goal-setting session with the Senior Advisory Committee on the twenty-sixth, similar to what we did with the commission. And then, as I mentioned, Youth Advisory deadline is upon us. Appointments are scheduled for the seventeenth of September, and the first meeting, depending on the availability of the students, will be toward the end of September, so. Some improvements have been going on. Lyle Marsh and Yale Peterson Parks, we are currently doing some fencing and landscaping, planner improvements, irrigation retrofits, and putting in some drought-tolerant species and old planters that we inherited once the EDA had moved out. Audi Murphy Park, we are in the process of replacing benches and trash receptacles there with more durable products. And then, also, we had to repair some of the park trail lighting due to some copper theft that occurred over the past few weeks, and putting on some better theft-resistant and vandal-resistant products, as well as in the restroom, some fixture retrofits to make those more durable as well. You may or may not have heard that at Case Nacero Center, there was, over the west side of the building, some issues with the HVAC unit there. We're in the process of finalizing the bids to try and purchase a new unit to go over the top of that west end. And then Cherry Hills Media and Landscaping Phase Three bid process has just concluded, and will be returning to council at the next meeting with a request for contract award. And then finally, we are currently still working on the playground resurfacing, which we have a grant for right now, and will return to council with an update on that in the future for a contract award. Just some images so that you can see some of the products that we're working on. I did mention at the last update, the cow recycle truck that we did receive, it's all stickered up, and we've been using it for events. Restroom building doors have been installed, those are the solid metal doors with the magnetic time locks. Also, the fence product, the two-rail vinyl is there in the middle, and then some drought-tolerant plans and irrigation processes, point-to-point irrigation is right there. And then, some examples of our retrofits and some of the copper theft, and then resulting securing of those poles as well. Lastly, just an update on our operator service agreement with Valleywide. As you heard this evening, we've completed the cost of services study, and with the resolution establishing those fees, Valleywide will be now, as well as the city, now able to charge fees for particular facility uses. They are, again, are aware of those, and are going to be integrating those into the reservation system that they utilize for fields and rentals. Also, part of the existing contract with them for the current year had an exhibit for pre-existing conditions. That really just was a quick inventory of what the parks look like today, and what deferred maintenance items need to be addressed in order for them to continue the maintenance at a particular higher standard, to ensure that there isn't an increase of those maintenance issues. Along those lines, though, there are routine maintenance items that Valleywide had informed staff were not part of their base contract. And so, there was a memo issued back on the twenty-second of July that sort of outlined those details, and staff is intending to return to the city council on the third of September with a supplemental contract that will give better detail on what all those additional services will incorporate. And then, obviously, we will bring that to the Park and Recreation Trails Commission on the twenty-eighth, so they can take a look and have a recommendation for council as well. So that concludes my update.
Excellent. Looks like a lot of nice retrofit work on there, and spending that diff money from those evil developers.
That's right.
Yeah. Does that conclude staff's report, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, thank you.
And Councilman, I think we had Mr. August and Mr. Furman wanted to have a workshop on water in the future?
You can schedule it whenever you want, give them proper notice, and they seem eager to want to come down and talk to us about it. It did rain today, so, I was going to tease Mr. Sullivan if he showed up today, but next time, leave the thunder out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
For the water. So if you can do that staff for us, or whenever, maybe a workshop with Western End, and we'll invite the public in, and you're probably just as disbelieving as I am, so we'll all get our opportunities to talk.
But I heard that at the RCUC meeting on Saturday, that a lot of the rumors and fears were dispelled by EMWD, so I think that would be a valuable, valuable presentation to make to the rest of the community and get the questions answered.
Were you at the same meeting that I heard about? Were you at the meeting?
I heard, I heard from others who were there that said it was a great job.
Tom was there.
I was there, and they gave note, they skirted around a question.
Oh, they didn't talk about phase one through phase five-type drought phases for the water?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, but, okay. Do we have any other council member requests? Hearing none? We have a meeting coming up on...
Saturday.
Saturday, a special meeting?
Yes, that is correct. Eight forty-five, please, it's been posted and sent to you.
Eight-five?
Right.
Very good.
So that you can be here in time for the beginning of the sessions.
One request, if Mr. August would be mindful of this, remember that we gave very specific direction to staff on a lot of other things, the development code, things that we gave priority to. So, in the overall scheme of what we're asking for, these things that take a lot of staff effort and a lot of staff time, let's just be mindful of our council schedule as we go out through the weeks and the months. Mr. Johnson? All right, we are adjourned.